Okay, let's go ahead and get started.
I'm going to record, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to city council in mid-September. Hard to believe by the time we meet next time, the leaves will be starting to show their pretty colors in the area. So, the year is winding down. If you would please join me in a moment of silent reflection as we begin the meeting, and then we will stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we've got a few guests that wish to address the council this evening. Our first up is on the go-to-meeting. Scott, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening. The council chambers are yours.
Thank you for giving me the time. I had changed my background, but you can see I'm actually in a basement. I'm actually traveling, otherwise I'd be there in person. I'm attending a celebration of life ceremony for a dear friend this weekend, so I couldn't make it to you guys in person. But Theresa had mentioned that I could present remotely, so that's what I chose to do tonight. I want to thank you guys for the time. It was great. I'm quite excited to speak to you. And I also want to thank Councilor Buck Blue for suggesting that I come to council and speak publicly about what we're trying to do and who we are. So, what I'm going to do tonight is introduce the company I represent myself, and then tell you what we really want to do, why we want to do it, and how it can benefit all the constituents of Buckhannon. So, One Fiber is a venture capital-backed company whose mission is to bring affordable and equitable broadband internet connections to everyone in the United States, but especially to small towns and cities we feel have been pretty underserved by the existing solution providers. We're actively talking to a number of small cities and towns, most of them in West Virginia, but also in a couple of other states. We founded the company to be a full-service provider, so we're capable of handling all aspects of design, construction, financing, management of municipal broadband networks. We know through our conversations and research that every town is different, and that some cities and towns will have existing infrastructure that we can leverage, and we want to work with towns and cities to determine the right set of services for us to provide to you. We have a very experienced team of professionals ready to work with you, and we also have established partnerships.
If you could pause for one second?
Yeah.
Thank you. We have a train going by.
Oh, that's great.
In a beautiful city.
705? It's a 705 train?
It's a 705 train, apparently. Yeah. I think we're good now. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
No problem. It's a 705 train tonight.
Yes.
So, yeah, we have an experienced team of professionals ready to work with you. We also have partnerships with large national construction companies, including Urban Cable and ADB, who are leaders in their field. So, let me tell you a little bit about myself. Twenty-nine years ago, in 1994, I joined my first tech company, which was a dial-up internet service provider. I was a third employee, and we quickly grew from 1,000 customers to around 50,000 when the company was sold in 1998, four years after we had started it. Since then, I have launched and ran a number of notable technology companies or ventures, I guess, including the second-largest domain name registrar on Earth. A domain name is like buckhannonwv.org or google.com. So, back in the late '90s, I launched one of the first competitive services once the monopoly was taken later, Network Solutions, and then quickly became the number-two-place company in the market. I've also launched and ran a wireless company that was voted Best Wireless Service in America by Consumer Reports, generating around $80 million a year in three years after we launched it. And I had a senior leadership position at a global internet security company that took me all around the world, and that was acquired by Symantec about eight years ago, I want to say, for $700 million. So, basically, my career has been starting and growing successful tech companies. But that's enough about me. Let's talk a little bit more about what One Fiber wants to do with you guys. So, we did a lot of research. We looked all across the nation to find the best cities to work with. And believe it or not, we identified Buckhannon as one of the top 10. And so, we are focused on these 10 towns to try and help them bring municipal fiber to reality. We use things like your demographics, your existing infrastructure, and other market conditions to select you. So, I've been learning a lot about Buckhannon recently, and I look forward to visiting the Dairy Queen. I hear it's pretty good, and certainly worth the trip. It looks really cool. Another thing I learned about Buckhannon is that in 1937, community leaders in West Virginia got together and formed the Harrison Rural Electrification Association. Is that right? HRA. And it struck me that, at that time, those community leaders were frustrated that electricity was coming to all areas around them, but not to that area. So, they were frustrated, and they weren't expecting anyone else to come and bring it to them, so they formed the association and they did something about it. And since that time, you know, HRA obviously operates today and does some fiber stuff and seems to be doing a really good job, and something that I think you would be proud of having in your community. And it struck me that this is not unlike the situation the city faces today. It's just something different that you don't have access to. Instead of electricity, it's high-speed internet. Obviously, it's in towns are installing high-speed internet connections and really benefiting from it. We, One Fiber, want to help you get high-speed internet to every address in Buckhannon as soon as possible. High-speed internet, it transforms communities. It increases real estate values by 3% to 5% overnight. It increases the average economic output per capita by 5% to 10% pretty quickly. It also unlocks all sorts of amazing opportunities for your citizens to learn and participate in new economies. It also helps with retaining existing business and attracting new business. You know, most companies can't operate without broadband internet access. So, at One Fiber, we look at high-speed internet like sort of essential infrastructure. It's like electricity or even roads, like main street. We believe that Buckhannon best be served by owning and controlling this infrastructure, allowing qualified internet service providers to compete, to provide the customers with support and billing to the end-users. But having a single company control your critical infrastructure generally results in higher prices and poorer service, and we've seen that across lots of different things. The best thing, the best part of this whole proposition, and probably the reason that I joined, was it's budget-neutral. This network will pay for itself in, you know, it will take very long relative to the length of the life of the asset. So, when you install a fiber network, it's generally going to be 40 years. But in a place that's more remote, it'll probably be 50 or 60 years before it gets replaced by the next technology. And so, it's kind of a no-brader to get it in as soon as possible, from my perspective. And once it pays for itself, you can use it as a revenue tool, or probably, from what I get, you would probably just lower the rates. Customers are discharged for the maintenance and operation of the service. Okay, so I know you've been providing us some information. I put together, my team and I put together a packet that we, Theresa can send to you guys. I don't know if you had time to look at it. If you have, great. If you haven't, that's fine, but at this point, I don't want to take up too much time in tonight's meeting, but I would like to see if anybody has any questions.
What type of investment are you talking about to develop this?
What is the cost to the municipality? How much do you have to outlay?
Yes.
Is that the... Yeah, okay, great. Well, did you get the packet that I had sent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think it's on the right side of the... Sorry, I'll have to bring it up.
Is the 5.2 million, that's under the financial details, estimated cost of bill?
Yes, correct.
Correct.
Wow. So, essentially, you would do a municipal bond for 5.2 million and sign a contract with us, and we would build the network. We're ready to start. And after, you know, we say three years to build a network, because we're very conservative. For a town like your size, I would be surprised if we couldn't do it much faster than that, but let's assume three years, just for fun. So, in three years, everything's built, and we can start connecting every home and business in town. And then, from that point forward, you're looking at, you know, under 20 years for it to pay for itself, and it's a 40-year asset. And then, all of a sudden, every address in town has high-speed fiber internet right to the building.
So, who is the administrator of this? Would we build our own administration, our own team to operate this system?
Great question. It's up to you. We are experts at this, decades of experience, so we offer that as a service to you.
Okay.
You could hire people and employ them, and get them to do that, and we would be fine with that. It would probably make more sense to just let us do it, because we're going to be doing this with a number of towns, and, you know, we're pretty good at it. Typically, cities and towns, especially when it comes to technology stuff, they're just not leaders. Now, maybe you guys are, or maybe you want to be, and that's fucked with us. But to be honest, like, we're fine with any component of this being done by a third party. So, like, the HRA does have fiber internet today, and I think they offer it to, like, it's expensive and custom. And then, I think they have some residential offerings as well. I wasn't able to get in touch with anybody there, but I thought I'd come and talk to you guys first, and just introduce myself, and then, you know, see what came out of the woodwork.
So, out of the $35 to $100 a month access fees, what percentage of that then would be ours, and what percentage would go back to you for the management part?
Right. So, it's about... So, you would take 40%, let's just say, I mean, it really depends on the details, but broadly, let's say you would take 40% to pay down the debt, you would take 10% to operate... No, sorry, sorry. You would take 50% to operate the network and pay down the debt. And we would also have the third parties that provide the end-user billing and support. They would get some money as well. So, you know, it really depends on the, when we get into the details. I guess it's the best way to answer that question. But broadly speaking, out of 100%, you know, we take a piece for the network management and the internet service providers, because we have, we want to have two or three internet service providers provide the end-user billing and customer support. We don't want to do that, and we think it's better that it's done locally. So, if you have a local IT company or person, you know, we encourage them to sign up, to offer, you know, selling the modems, setting people up, providing the customer support. As well, we have a couple of national partners that are leaders, that we have agreements with or understandings with, that they would, they're going to also provide the service. They're sort of 24-by-7 support companies that have expertise in developing that sort of front-end, frontline customer service and billing.
So, what I heard was 50% for us for operation and debt paydown. The other 50%, part of that would be for your administration, part would be for servicing and provider fees?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a spreadsheet that I didn't include, because it really makes more sense for us to sit down and really hash it out. So, I have it ready to just fill in the numbers, and it will show to the penny who gets what. You know, it depends. If we're doing everything, obviously, we're going to charge more. If we're doing barely anything, we're going to charge less. I can tell you on the construction part, what's normal is 10% on the construction, right? And then, when it comes down to the ongoing service, providing ongoing service, it sort of varies. If you were to hire people to run the network, then that would take some work off our, quite a bit of work off our plate.
I have three questions. One is, what is the, what's the adoption rate in other communities? So, the communities at which you work with now, what's the percentage, or what's the customer mix when you go into a community?
Sure.
And how's the signup rate going?
Yeah, so, there's a couple of phases of this, right? So, understand, during the construction phase, that takes periods. We have to drag a wire, a fiber-optic cable, from your closest egress point to your town, and then we have to build a local loop, and then we're ready to start lighting up addresses. So, let's assume that takes three years to get to that point where you can go to the first address and say, "We're ready to connect you." I would expect it to be faster, but let's just say three years. And then, you're going to take, like, it's going to, well, in your case, because you don't have a lot of great options for your non-business customers, it's going to get adopted pretty quickly, I would reckon. But let's say, to be very conservative, 70% in two to three years, okay? Especially if you're the only game in town.
Okay. And of the community, you've identified, you say, the top 10 or so communities in West Virginia. Have you or has anybody from your team made presentations with any other community yet? And how was it received?
You were the first. So, I have, I think, three more booked, and I have another nine that we're, or another five that we're working on.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And finally, I would ask, you know, we, the $35 to $100 subscriber pay-per-month access, it's, you know, 35 would be low-end as to what we have for internet now. I understand it's not, I understand that fiber is different, but 100 would be more on the upper end, just for internet. What would be the difference? I mean, you know, let's just say a private company would come in and want to connect the entire community, and we wouldn't have to pay anything for it. It would be all on a private company, say, you know, Optimum comes to mind, or let's say, CityNet comes in and wants to do that. CityNet's just up the road in Bridgeport. So, what would be, what would be the difference? What would be the difference in if they came and connected every house and every business in Buckhannon versus this?
Right. So, Optimum, for example, or Altice, as I like to call them, but Optimum is their marketed in your consumer, in your area. They, you know, that's a monthly charge. So, you understand, there's two components to this. There's the construction, and then there's the monthly charge. The monthly charge, like, when you pay for your cable that you get from Optimum, you know, it's a monthly bill. So, it's the same bill as, that we would be charging for this fiber internet. And Optimum will have a motivation to make money. You'll have a motivation to enable the community. So, if you own it and set the pricing, once it's paid for itself, you can make it really inexpensive. Whereas, once Altice or Optimum has paid for their network, they're going to want to keep the prices as high as they can, so that they can make the most money, which, by the way, is fair enough, and, you know, that's fair, what they do. And they do it in bigger cities, you know, to varying degrees of success. But it's the small cities and towns that, right now, haven't been well-served, in our estimation. With CityNet, I have reached out to them. They're vice president of business development. I haven't heard back from him, but I only reached out to him last week. And so, we love CityNet. We'd love to work with them. We're big fans of what they do. I don't know if they're planning on coming to Buckhannon anytime soon. My guess is, they wouldn't be, but maybe they are. I haven't spoken with them. I've only made some inquiries.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, sir?
Mr. Allen. I have a question about the ongoing efforts of the state consortium. Our previous economic development director, I think, has been very active with the state of West Virginia's attempt to build lots of new towers and all that stuff. Does this, is this integrated as part of that in any shape, way, manner, form? Can you, what association is there between your enterprise and the state consortium that's trying to bring our internet to all places, West Virginia?
So, I'm sorry, I had a really hard time hearing. I think there's a microphone that's giving some background noise, and also...
Oh, yeah. Let's try that one more time.
Yeah.
We pulled it in a little bit.
Rob Hinton, the predecessor economic development director here in Upshur County before Mr. Skinner, is, has been heading up the state consortium on bringing improved internet throughout all of West Virginia. Are you, are you all alive in some way with that entity that is a state project, or can you explain how that's integrated? Or I'm curious about how that works.
Sure. Another actually question. So, to answer that, to the best of my capabilities, you know, we are in, you know, we're engaging with various entities, government entities. You know, we have, I guess, from the outset, when we were looking at the national picture, we looked at the E program, and, you know, we're very familiar with that. We just, you know, are turning our attention to the West Virginia situation, and we're starting to make those connections and have those conversations. I think typically, what I can say with some confidence here tonight is that the state efforts have been more focused on larger communities, but I can't say that with as much certainty as I'd like to. So, let me say that we are very excited to work with any state agency or authority to help bring fiber internet to any of the cities and towns in West Virginia that we're targeting. So, we consider them allies. In our experience, they maybe move a little bit more slowly than we like to, and that's just the nature. You know, we are a venture capital-backed company, so we can be quite quick and dexterous, whereas, you know, rightfully so, state, federal agencies have to think about things very carefully and make sure that they aren't making any mistakes. That's not to say that we don't think about making mistakes, but it's just a different animal. You know, so what we bring to the table from the financing side, you know, you're going to have this municipal bond that you're going to put out, and there's going to be a period of the construction, and before you get enough customers, where you won't have enough revenue to pay the bond. So, we provide bridge financing for that as a solution to that particular problem. So, we've thought through the entire financial model, and again, I apologize, I think these are great questions. I tried to keep it very high-level for tonight, partially because I'm remote and partially because it's the first time we're talking, but I can follow up after this with very deep financial models. And in fact, what I would love to do is put in the specific numbers that apply to your particular situation, so to be very explicit about the specific numbers that we're going to filter to do this.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Scott, for being with us tonight. We extend our sincere condolences as you attend your friend's celebration of life.
Thank you.
And we look forward to, you know, potential additional conversations.
Great. Can I ask council what the appropriate next steps would be? Is there someone I should reach out to specifically on council? Should I reach out to all of you? Is there a committee or a subcommittee? What would your guidance be on the best way to move this forward?
I would suggest reaching out to Theresa Summers. She is the, she kind of manages the council from an agenda and meeting standpoint, and she can then find out from us when would be a good time to set up a meeting date.
I talk to all sorts of city secretaries these days, and I can tell you Theresa is the best. So, I'm happy to work with her. I will lead you to the rest of your business, and I thank you for your time, and I look forward to speaking with you soon.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
All right. Good night, gentlemen.
Okay. Pam, is that you?
Yeah, you want to bring me?
Yes, I do.
Okay. We hear, we hear background music from you, so... Okay. All right. Up next, we have Mr. Tom Aman, who has traveled over here yet again from the grand metropolis of Bridgeport. Tom and I spent some time together this week at the Economic Development Conference, where what was discussed some of? Broadband. What was discussed some of? Fiber. And oh, by the way, it is not, it is not urbanly focused. It is actually focused on rural areas. So, and the Upshur County Development Authority is still managing several different grants. We are actually working, we are actually involved in a fiber loop in Mercer, Raleigh, Summers, Fayette, Greenbrier, Wyoming, and McDowell counties with AEP. So, who is a for-profit company who's working on this, and is not going to charge municipalities a lot of money, and is also going to keep the price low. But we can, we can talk about it later, but just to throw that out there. So, Tom is here to talk to us a little bit about Stockard. So, I would like for the council to consider, in the interest of Tom's time, if we could, as we hear words from him, and Stacy Karakoff is here as well, you'll remember Stacy attended the meeting we had last week via phone. So, if we could maybe bring F1 to the table, and then maybe just talk about that all while Tom is here, I think that would be, that would be great. So, Tom, if you wouldn't mind any remarks you have, if you would approach the podium. We are recording and have some folks online this evening, so they can hear you through a microphone.
Hopefully, this is working, and everyone can hear me. I'll speak a little loud, more loudly if no one, okay, more loudly. So, Tom Aman with Steptoe and Johnson. We've been engaged by the city at bond council for the Stockard U Center project. We had some early discussions and talked about different financing options. One that is, I think, very advantageous would be USDA financing, and so, that's something we talked about early on, and I know that city administration has been working on that administrative process to hopefully get a commitment for that financing, which is by way of letter of conditions. But as I had indicated at that time, it is, there are a number of, it's a, a number of administrative hurdles that have to be cleared in that process, and it's very deliberative. They have forms with all kinds of boxes that have to be checked, and information that has to be submitted to them. There's a lot of due diligence that they do, which is good, before they issue a financing commitment, and so, the city's been working through that process. It's a little newer in West Virginia, but more customary for them nationally to require interim financing. So, historically, in West Virginia, with the Community Facilities Program, which is what you're seeking funding through, they would provide both the construction and permanent financing. So, it was one bond, if you will, that would cover construction, that would be in place for the life of repayment. Nationally, that's not the case. They require their clients... They require their clients to obtain interim bank financing, and then they come in at the completion of construction and pay off that interim financing. So newer requirements in West Virginia, there's a couple that they've done. I think we've done at least one construction loan under that program. So that's what they have advised the town, city, that they would require that you all do as the interim financing, and so that's part of the discussion here. More high level, for those that may not remember, you all have done a couple of these bond financings that aren't utility-related, and that involves the building commission. And so the building commission actually issues this bond and enters into a lease agreement with the city, and then the city repays the bond through a lease, by making periodic lease payments, and that repays the bond. So because there's no revenue stream here, that we can specifically, under state law pledge, to repayment, such as a water sewer system or something along those lines, we have to use that building commission structure. So that's what we've, we've talked about doing, and that's what we're planning on doing. And I think that we've got the building commission all up to speed, and people appointed with those of office and that sort of thing, ready to go. So that's an important part of that, so, you know, you guys are sort of ahead of the game on that. So here we are, close to, I think, we just, a week ago or two weeks ago, had this public hearing that was required by USDA. So you all have checked yet another box, and I sense are getting pretty close to probably getting a letter of conditions from them. Which is good, because then, right about that point in time is when they lock in an interest rate, and they will tell you at that point that that rate is good for a period of time, it's usually, you know, 18 months or enough, they give you enough time if you're proceeding with due diligence to get your, get the financing in place and close on it. But if you're going to go that route, it would be, it would be good to get that fairly soon, because I'd say in November, when the FOMC meets again, you're probably going to, there's a chance you could see another 25 basis point rate increase, which is going to flow back to you guys through the commitment. So if, if you're still interested in that USDA process, you know, the thing is about it, it's very long-term financing. You know, they'll give you 20, 25, 30-year repayment term at a subsidized rate, it's not a market rate. So it's a subsidized rate, which will be lower than you can get from any other type of financing that I would advise you all to get into. There's other things you can do that are fairly exotic, that I would, I'd never counsel you guys to do that. So it's a subsidized, lower rate that you can get from a bank or in the market. It's long-term, and with a bank, you're typically not going to get them to go out more than 10, 12, max 15 years on a fixed-rate basis. I typically don't advise to get into floating rates, because you never know what the future holds. Maybe you can refinance out of that, maybe you can't. Predicting the future market conditions, if I could do that, I would not be standing here right now. So the USDA, if you can get a letter of conditions, if you can complete the remaining hurdles to jump through, it's going to be hard for you guys to beat that, I suggest you probably can't beat that. But they are going to require this interim financing, and so, in that kind of a scenario for a borrower like you all, a community like this, you're typically looking to your local banks to make a commitment, say, two years, to make that construction loan. But they will have a lock, solid, guaranteed takeout commitment from USDA to pay them off, if the thing gets built. So they don't want to assume the construction risk. They'll put the construction risk on another lender. That lender's going to assume that risk, and that's going to be built into their, that rate. It's going to be short-term, and they're going to have a guaranteed takeout as long as we can get the project built. So that would be general overview, so I'd be happy to try to answer any questions anyone might have with respect to that.
Well, I think at this point, we need to find out what this is going to cost, cost us. So I'm all for sending this out for bid and trying to resolve the remaining issues we have with aligning this with affordability. So, and I hope that's, moving this forward along with the USDA stuff, that we can move forward also.
Yeah, so timing here starts to become important with respect to bidding the project versus availability of funds. So if you wait until you open bids, and then you see, oh geez, either this works or it doesn't work. If you decide it doesn't work, from a financial standpoint, then you have to engage in some value engineering, try to work with your architect to recheck the project, to see if you can make it affordable, get it within your budget. That takes a little time. But if you, if you wait, typically you open those bids, you have a 60-day bid hold, max. In today's environment, with materials prices, contractors are skittish about holding those prices out for long periods of time. So assume you have a 60-day bid hold, well, that's the period of time that you have to get your financing in place and close the loan, the bond. So if you wait to go out and approach banks to see what their terms may or may not be, till after you have those bids in hand and decide that you have something you can move forward with, you're going to be too late. And so what I would suggest would be, you get a cost estimate as best you can from your architect, and then based on that, it's something you all feel like that you can move forward with, then we put, and this town puts a, our request for proposal together to approach banks for construction financing, and then, you know, get proposals in, and then hopefully in the interim, you get a letter of conditions from USDA, and then you open those bids, and then hopefully everything lines up at that point.
So we have the, the rendition that you saw at the meeting last week at Stockard, we have, our architect initiated with a third-party bidder, or not bidder, estimator, if you will, based on cost of square footage and the materials and the look of it, that that particular drawing, that particular, what we've decided on as a council, that costs us roughly $6.5 billion. So we have that. Then, another meeting came about where he scaled it down quite a bit, and it excluded a lot of things that were included, and would require fundraising on the back end, if we wanted to add bleachers, if we wanted to add certain kind of floor, if we wanted to add storage space, and that brought us down to around $5.6 million. So we have those two, but again, those are not, those are not construction, those don't contemplate local construction companies, that's just, that's just an estimator, putting it into a computer, figuring out what the, what the average cost per square footage would be under current market conditions for north central West Virginia, and plugged it in, and that's what we got. 12,800 square feet or so, and I think it was $360 or so dollars a square foot, which I thought was a little high, but then again, inflation has, has, has made those, those estimates creep up quite a bit. I know that, you know, the, the building over here on the corner, the Development Authority building, it is about a 15,000 or so square-foot building, and it costs, and it's not a gym, it's, it's an office building, and that was in 2019, it cost $5.5 billion to construct. So...
So I guess I'm hearing that we've got to have our stack together before we initiate it. So we're going into this thinking we, you know, it's $6.5 billion project, or $5.5, I think that's still more than I personally would like to commit. I'm about $3.5 million, I think, is a number that we can live with. But for us to put something out that we have indications are going to come back at $5 to $6 million, aren't we spinning our wheels? And shouldn't we work with? And, and when you said that the council designed this, I pushed back and say this was, I didn't have any input, other than to review the plans as they were coming.
Well, we've talked about that, but you could, we could debate if those plans were discussed in public meetings at all times.
Correct.
With Stockard U and Community Center. So as council members, we have every right to attend those meetings.
Which you requested a public meeting, you were there, and we did that, and when the public came back and said that what they wanted, what the Stockard Board had decided that was the best way forward, so...
But we had not voted on that as a council.
Yes, we have.
No, we have, not to approve $5.5 or $6.5.
No, not to approve $5.5.
That's what I said, that's the existing plan.
We approved the, we approved the drawing, the rendition, we approved that.
So once it comes, I mean, I don't...
We approved it, we didn't know what it cost.
I don't agree with $6.5 or $5.5 million. I never approved that, period.
We haven't.
Or neither did this council.
No one had, David.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
What Robbie said, Mayor said, it sounded like we approved it.
We approved the drawing, David, we approved, we, we've spent years on this, we approved the drawing.
As far as we're at the point where...
I understand that, Robbie, but we're not going to spend that kind of money.
But I want to say this too, the reason we're at the kind of money we're talking about now is we keep pushing it down. We keep another six months, another three months, let's have another meeting, let's wait for another six months, let's do this, let's do that. So we need to at least get the process moving and get a bid to see if it's in a ballpark that we can build this project.
This started, this started a million bucks, give or take $200,000, 15 years ago.
And if we keep, if we keep up what we're doing, it will be another two or three years.
Well, it's not because we keep up, it's we keep adding to the whole process, much more than what we had planned.
That's disgusting, we have to take it tonight.
For us is, we have to come up with a plan that we can afford.
Right.
In a timely fashion to meet our bond requirements and the USDA requirements, and...
The, the good thing is, right now, you don't really have any requirements. So you guys, you know, you're not under the gun, other than the timeframe in which you want to see this project happen. Like USDA, they're, they're not, they're not going to be pushing you guys. The architect, they're not going to be pushing you guys. It's, it's all about your all's timeframe right now. But I would suggest the order of activities here would be working with your architect on the rendering that the mayor referred to, that you all can agree to, and whether you can agree on a cost associated with that rendering, and then that would be the first thing. If you can, if you can agree there, then you wait till you get, have a letter of conditions from USDA, and then we go out with an RFP for the construction financing, and then you would bid the project. That would be kind of the order of events.
But here's the problem, even the architect thinks that estimate from the third-party came in high. So until we bid it to real contractors, can we say, all right, obviously we're a million over budget from what we feel we can afford? So where can we cut, Mr. Contractor or Mrs. Contractor? Where from a professional point of view, what can we abate? What can we cut? So in my mind, I think we need to get it out to bid as soon as possible, so we can see what the real people on the ground building these kind of buildings will come back with number-wise. Otherwise, we're just imagining things.
I, I would say only to keep in mind that 60 days.
I understood.
Once you open those bids, if we start thinking about, if that's the first point in time that we start thinking about obtaining the construction financing, we're not going to be able to close within that period of time.
Can we not, I mean, let me ask council and Tom, you know, can we not determine the amount that we're comfortable with? Go for the financing on that amount, have it lined up, when the bids come in, see if we can't tailor a building down to that amount? We're doing both things at the same time.
Yes. I thought we had already determined the amount that we were willing to finance.
He's saying $3.5, I think you're saying $3.5, I'm saying...
No, I'm not saying anything. I'm saying it's in minutes, we agreed on what, $4 million or $4.5 million? And that's where I'm drawing the line, period. We can't afford $5, $6.5 million?
Another year? Okay. Yes, David.
So I've actually completed the underwriting process.
Hold on, no, you can't...
Here, sit up here. Man is coming.
So I am with USDA, and I have completed the underwriting process. This has already went to National Office for Review. This right now is purely an estimate based off of your all's financials. I did write it for a maximum of $4.5 million, that, based on your financials, you know, came back that you could afford that. USDA will authorize bidding. Once we do that, then we can definitely look at scaling back the project, you know, fingers crossed that the bids come in under, we can take away that. I mean, if there is a bit overrun, that's something else we would have to look at, but for now, that's where we're at. So I'm just waiting on approval from National Office, and we will be issuing the letter of conditions.
Let me, let me ask you, what, what is the subset of USDA interest right now?
Currently, it's 3.65%.
And it could go up 25 basis points.
Yep.
Over that again.
Right now, it's 3.65%.
3.65%.
For 30 years.
So it'd still be under 4% in the number problem?
Yep. Yep. And again, with the interim financing, you know, purely for underwriting, I had to go with the market rate right now, which is pretty high, but...
What is the market rate now?
The other day I looked, it was 8.5%.
Seriously?
And that changes daily.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
But as Tom mentioned, you know, if you have a relationship with a local bank, they can definitely work with you and get that rate down, and, I mean, the faster construction goes, you know, the much you're not going to have to draw down from that interim loan.
Yeah.
Sorry about what I said about those administrative hurdles.
Well, you didn't know who was there, did you?
I was here. No, in, in the environmental process...
You need security on the way out, Tom?
I just gave Jay Hall the clearance for the environmental, so that was your biggest hurdle. So now that that's out of the way, I think we're, we're moving in the right direction.
So we just need to figure out what we need, what we would like to build?
Well, you sent me what you'd like to build, so...
Yeah.
Well, if you can get that done for what we'd like to spend, then we're all for it.
Yes, I'm trying my best.
And you can give us estimates on if we do $4 million, or $3.5, or $4.5, and did a 20 or 30-year, what would be our cost per year? Is that correct?
Right. Yep, all of that will come at letter of conditions.
And I think Ambie has kept us pretty well informed.
Yes.
On the 30 and 40-year opportunities. I mean, this, we're, we're not really learning anything here tonight that we haven't been discussing for months.
That's a danger move, I mean, really. We managed to push that thing a year off now. We could have moved on this a year ago. But we're here, we're ready to go. I think as Mr. Riggers said, at the minute, the minute, and I wrote the minute, so if we voted to approve, you said $4, or $4.5, or do you remember, Jack?
I thought it was $4.5, Ambie?
I think Jack's right. I think it was $4 million to borrow, counting on us having a half a million approximately in our capital campaign, which we are close to, so $4.5 is definitely my recollection.
And Tom, you can continue to guide us on how to move the pieces together, as far as local financing, you know, when's the perfect time, or the best time to go out for a bid, then I think we're, we're ready to go.
But we're, we're also, but we're also going to have to, if, if this project, if, if it is the will of the council to, so let's just say it is $4.5 million, and we would have to come to an agreement on what does that look like? We would have to bring the drawing back of what the scaled-down version looks like for it to be approved, because what is approved, the, the, the drawing that is approved estimate is, is $2 million higher than where, where we are. So we would have to come back and approve the drawing that fits the $4.5 million dollar... So we would have to come back and approve the drawing that fits the four point five million dollar wish.
But again, I think that had to be done once it's bid. We've got to move quickly to scale it down. Because if we keep using perhaps just estimating company, we can find another estimating company that may give us some different figures. And, you know, let's, that's just imaginary. But if we actually go out and bid it, then we know what the real cost would be and start taking this room off, cut the spur of footage, make the hard changes immediately.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with the mayor that I think the way to go would be to, for council to come together on agreement as to the rendering and not to exceed amount for the cost associated with that rendering. And then once the bids are open, then you all can go back to the drawing board and figure out.
So you're saying do a new rendering that we think will come in at four and a half, no, before we bid?
No, based on what you're saying, I think the, the rendering, the building that you all want to build, that you think you want to build, if, and at a not to exceed cost amount that your architect or the estimator is telling you that you can get for that building. And then once you open the bids, then you can make decisions at that point. That's, that's what I think.
I just don't want us to spend six months now on a new architectural design.
Well, I suggest we just sharpen our pencils, have a meeting and get it done. You know, that's, we're kicking the can down the road.
Well, you have to authorize, council will have to authorize the architect to go out with the parameters that he's going to bid the project with. And that's going to include a rendering, not really a cost amount, but I don't think council should go out with, with something and, you know, without having some idea as to what it would cost and approving a not to exceed amount for cost associated with that particular rendering. I think that would be prudent.
And as Ms. Karikoff observes, the difference between three point six five and three point nine, when you're talking financing maybe over forty years, is hundreds of thousands of dollars.
It is.
So I, I get it that it's forty years and, yeah, I'll be a hundred and six at that point, but anyway. Just saying, it, it's not inconsequential. There is reason to move quickly.
There is. Yes.
So the question is begged, is there any action that this council can take tonight of a voting nature? Or are we simply going to develop a consensus that we need Michael Mills back at the table as soon as possible?
Well, I think, I think we have to involve the Stalker Board too. I think we might need to have, we might need to schedule a special joint meeting of the Stalker Board and us with Michael to get. Because if we don't do that, then we're going to have to wait till Stalker, they'll refer it to here, we'll refer something back. If we get everybody on the same page in the same room to try to, to Jack's point, sharpen the pencil, that probably makes the most sense. Because if we don't involve the Stalker Board, they're going to be upset. They have a lot of work invested in this too. And if we just send it to them, then the council could, could tear it apart and say we don't like it. So I think we need to just quickly, maybe next week, get a meeting set up with everybody. Bring them in the room, see if Michael can come over and talk about.
So Stacy, we had a meeting to prepare to put this out to bid. We did have to thought what the meeting was for.
We just had a public meeting that was informing the public. You filed an application with USDA seeking funding.
Right. So how long do we have if we start messing around, going back from meeting to meeting to meetings? Does this expire at some point? We got to do another public meeting and all of that? I mean, what, what, because we have, we have an item on the agenda tonight, but if I'm hearing you right, we shouldn't act on this tonight?
I was unaware, I wasn't aware that you all hadn't voted on a specific amount. On my end, you're just waiting for a letter of conditions. And at that point, once you fulfill all of my requirements, I will authorize you to go out to bid.
Do we need to take action tonight to specifically request the letter of conditions or is that something you're working on right now?
Well, it sounds like if we don't have the letter of conditions, we don't have the authorization to go out to bid yet. So then we, we, we really can't take action on this. My suggestion is we get everybody on the same page.
Can you anticipate that within the next two to four weeks, we would have the letter of conditions?
Typically, it's two weeks for National Office Review.
And that's roaring, pretty much ready to go.
Tom, Mr. Aiman, could you give us a written document telling us the steps we have to take so we can hold everybody's feet to the fire?
Sure.
And, and try to nail the thing down instead of every two weeks coming back to this room. Well, we got to, you know, another six weeks, we'll get around to it. Because, I mean, again, when I became a member of this council, we were talking about Stalker. We're waiting on grants and then we're waiting on something else and then something else. And then we got some property and then something else. I mean, it's, it's just, it's very frustrating, very frustrating.
I'm going to say we have been moving on our step.
You've been moving great. No, no, you've been, it's this, it's this body, the council body. But go ahead, Ambie, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, we've been moving with the paperwork, Mr. Aiman. There is a lot of paperwork with USDA and a lot of hoops you have to jump through. So we're to the point now to make some serious decisions. So we're doing that right now.
You really haven't been in a position on the current path to pull the trigger.
Right.
Until, until you get that letter of conditions. So there's, there's really not much you could have done in the last few months, other than that could have hastened the situation for you.
How long?
Other than kind of going back and forth on these renderings and trying to figure out what you're willing to pay for. That's, that's the piece that's still out there.
Well, up to this point, I think it's just what we want or what folks want is in there. And once the first price came back, we kind of were starting.
And when was the first price, when did it come back? How long ago was it? Three weeks, four weeks?
A month or so. So we've got to, you know, we've got to do the work, get this thing aligned with what we're willing to borrow.
In addition with getting the groups in one room, should we go ahead and also simultaneously call a meeting of the Building Commission?
I would suggest that.
Okay.
That if you're going to have a joint meeting, to have the Building Commission members there as well.
Okay.
With the Stalker.
As you kind of opened up the meeting with, talking about the Building Commission, which we do have intact, we can call the meeting of the Building Commission and do it all, can we do all at once?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm just thinking, based on what I'm hearing you all say, the approach here might be to come to agreement on a rendering that pleases everyone, and then a not to exceed borrowing amount. And I don't think that the two necessarily have to be connected. You all could sort that out later on, once you open the bids. But that's what I would suggest.
Well, I'm probably going to get a lot of people upset when they want to say what I'm going to say. But it's something that has been out there. And I'm, I'm supporting doing something for Stalker. I think it's a great asset for the community, not just the city, but for the county citizens also. But then we have something that's come lately about a recreational complex with the JF Allen property. And, I mean, I listen to what people say within the community. And some people say, well, do you need to take a look at Stalker differently because of what the county, along with the city at some point in time, might want to do for the rec project? And I think not to discuss that would be not appropriate. So. Maybe I'll need a security.
Well, I think it has to launch. I mean, I know some of, there's different opinion, opinions on this council. But Stalker does not give us kind of development situation and vice versa. It's not. We can, and we will discuss that.
Yep.
We'll continue to discuss that. But I mean, you know, we're not going to just pack everything up and say, all right, it's over because there's an idea out there that might, that might happen. So let's just stop.
I agree with you.
Let's just treat, put everything away. Let's just wait a few years, see what happens.
But some people are saying, you know.
Absolutely.
And our decisions are only as good as the information we're basing them on. And we don't, the information is coming back now that we're out of bounds. So we've got to get this thing back into budget and something we can all agree on.
When we put things out to bid, can you put them out to bid with alternates?
Yeah. I think, I think Michael Mills indicated at the meeting.
Sure.
He was saying, okay, I understand that.
Yeah. And I would suggest that by all means, because you don't want to have to go back and rebid the whole thing if you can just agree their pricing, a certain component that you all agree to take out.
Why don't you ask Michael Mills, you know, inform him of this conversation and how he would think we should approach it, you know? We've got to try to, try to get this thing aligned somehow. Maybe he has some insight or it will be revealed at this meeting that we all.
Mr. Skinner, if appropriate, I would make a motion that we do a couple of things that we count on.
Two motions or one? Is it going to be two motions or one motion?
It's sort of one A and one B. We need the letter of instructions from USDA. And Ms. Karikoff is the USDA representative and she says we'll have that in the next two weeks. That's your, that's your plan.
Well, she didn't say that. She said possibly. Two to four, you say?
It typically takes National Office two weeks to review, but as you know, we're ending our fiscal year and could face a shutdown. I mean.
That's true. That's true.
How about this? While we await receipt of the letter of instructions, we will fast track a meeting with all of our city entities, including the Stalker Board, City Council and our Building Commission.
And Mr. Mills.
Mr. Mills is critical to this. And Mr. Aiman and Ms. Karikoff can participate too, if that's helpful to the process. But we need to get that done ASAP.
I'd like, I'd like to request that be done after the thirtieth, so I can be here.
Vacation.
Maybe that would be good if you weren't.
Okay, well, here's the thing.
Could you participate with the phone, Randy?
We have a Stalker Board meeting scheduled for October fifth at four thirty. We could try to get all parties involved then, because that is their regular meeting. It's a Thursday. Now, that's means, that makes a very busy day for us because some of us are on the waste ward in the morning. Then remember, we've been invited by the County Commission to come up and have a chat in the afternoon, one at one, one thirty or so.
One o'clock.
Yeah. And so, and then we would have the Stalker Board meeting that's regularly scheduled. And then we would have a City Council meeting that evening. So we'll see a lot of each other that day. I'm just, but that, we do have a regular, unless you want to change the Stalker meeting some other time in that week. We could do that too, so that it's not all piled in one day.
Maybe the third or the fourth would be a better time to, so we're not so jammed up on that one day with four different meetings.
I think the Stalker meeting would be good to have after we have met with the County Commission.
Okay, then that, if you don't want to have it that day and pile it on, we would need to look at nine through thirteen.
I disagree with that because the County Commission, that's a totally different project.
I agree with you.
We need to focus on this project.
I don't want to, yeah, exactly.
I don't disagree with that, but I'm just saying there's, there's spins off. It's spinning off in different directions.
No, Dave.
I don't, I don't want, we're not, we're talking about Stalker to nothing else. That's why we're going to be.
I don't disagree with it.
Right.
All right. So what are we doing?
October three, four, before the fifth meeting.
You're, all right. Would you, would you, would you motion for three or four condition to Michael Mills' schedule and everybody else's schedule? We'll work with Teresa to.
Here's, here's the other thing. You want to, you want to have this meeting resolved as to what you want on your agenda for the October fifth meeting. And in order to comply with state law, that's got to be three days. So maybe October second is the day that we have this.
Monday?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine.
Exactly. That would be my motion. To bring everybody together that's necessary for this project on October second.
Please, just give me, give me what you would write in the motion.
We have a special meeting with all of our city entities for Monday, October second.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by McCollie, second by Rylands. Any further discussion on that piece? A meeting with the Building Commission, the City Council, the Stalker Board, Michael Mills and USDA and Steptoe and Johnson, if they so choose to want to participate on Monday, October second, six o'clock?
Whatever time the mayor can arrange.
All right. We'll work on a time. We'll just stick with the date for now. That's probably as good as we're going to get. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign a post. Motion carries. Okay.
That was easy. Next.
Tom, aren't you glad you came over?
Yeah.
There you go, Tom.
This was actually constructive. A lot of the things I go to now, it's, it's not even, they're arguing about things that don't even make any sense.
Oh, stick around.
Yeah. We do that after we leave.
Right. The, the tireder we get, the more that happens.
Before she goes, I just want to say Ms. Karikoff is one of my best B law states.
Guys, go ahead. Close the door when you're having a conversation, if you don't mind.
I'm just going to ask him a quick question right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Close the door so we can.
I'm sorry.
All right. Is there any other discussion we need to have relative to the Stalker project this evening? Are we good to move that, to get for the second? Okay. All right. I don't believe that there are any other guests that wish to address the board this evening. So let's go to the department and board reports. We'll begin with a one, Mr. Arnold. And anything you want to bring up underneath your, we want to talk about the Poundstone River Trail. We can do that.
Just get that out the books, if you want me to, while we're.
Okay.
I can run through the report real quick. I will. CJ, construction complete on the Gateway West project. Sewer, the crews will be moving to North Canal Street to investigate the depression in the street next week.
Close that door. Chief, chief, that echoes out there like crazy. I can hear it on recordings. I can pick up their conversations.
Work continues on the Myrna Street project and work continues on the Taylor Street sewer project. Contractors expected to cross Camden within the next week. On the, our under waste collection, some announcements. Saturday will be the last Make It Shine Day for this year. So encourage you to take a look at that. The Epsom County Solid Waste Authority will be conducting a paper shred event at the same time as our. At the same time as our Make It Shine event.
What, what will be in addition to your, your?
The paper shred event, okay, is from nine AM to twelve Saturday. And then just wanted to report, there was a lady here at last meeting that was asking about tire amnesty. And just this week, they have scheduled the state, that that is through the Environmental Protection Agency. They will be using our lot to conduct a tire amnesty day on Saturday, October twenty first, from nine AM until three PM. And again, it's the same rules. I've got a flyer that's, maybe got that finished up today and I think City Hall has some and.
That posted on social media.
Randy has sent it to Randy. So we've got that. And then water, the contractors have started on the Tenerdale Booster Station Art project. That's all I have under my report now. Unless there's questions on that.
Well, real quick, I'll bring council up to speed. Andrew and I have met at the city park. We have, we've walked it, measured it out. I know Jerry and Brad have been up there too. A couple of very small little trees were removed here this week, all in preparation for the pickleball courts to be installed. Those are, those, those areas where those will be are already marked off. We are, we have the mark off as well for the regulation sized basketball court. And then a, a larger tree limb of a tree that is, that is not in very good shape was taken down to eat the volunteers that we have to use their worries because that limb stuck right out over top of the rotary pavilion and they were, several different pieces of it were falling down. So that's been removed. So Carl Boone and his group can get to work on helping us restore the rotary pavilion that's up in the upper part of the park. So work is being done there.
They also removed another trip of the new pavilion.
Yes, sir.
That was dead. There was, there were leaves. It was completely dead. So, you know, that's, that's just part of the ongoing safety there in the park and trying to get the dead trees and limbs and things out of there. Make it safe for them.
There's also some confusion out there. If you see it or talk to people. The pedestrian refuge at St. Joseph's Hospital, that is part of the Gateway West project. That is part of the requirement. It is still part of the eighty twenty split that we share with the state of West Virginia. It is still part of the 80/20 split that we share with the state of West Virginia. Yes, our city crews worked on that, but 80% of the funding was provided by the West Virginia Department of Highways, as well as their design work. And then the city, basically, we just did what they did, what they said to do. So it's, it's not, we didn't just decide to do it. It's part of the, of the, of the project. We were required to do it for ADA from the State Department of Highway, so it's done, looks great. Thanks to our crews for doing it, but it's not, it is a city project, but it's not a city project. It is, it has that, you know, partnership component.
Not to beat that horse, but just to simplify, I think a little bit is, you wouldn't have got the sidewalks and the lighting had we not built the refuge island, because it is up to the Department of Highways and their engineers as to what is put on their rights of way.
Correct.
So in order to get the funding, we had to build the refuge island.
Yes, thank you.
Jerry, I know you have a plan for different streets and so forth, but Jack and I went to breakfast today on my home and we went down Tucker Street, and that is a terrible, terrible street. So if you could take a look at that, I'd appreciate it.
We have a project that has been outlined in that area that includes Tucker and Ritchie.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
The light at Locust and Main Street, there used to be a sensor on that light, and if you pulled up to it at midnight and there wasn't any cars in any other direction, within 15 seconds, the light would change and you'd, I came back from the WVU pit game Saturday night, it was 12:58, and I sat there until 1:03, five minutes, waiting for that cycle to change. There were pedestrians crossing things going off, no pedestrians anywhere. What has happened to that sensor on that light?
Well, the sensors are still there. They're, they're actually in the pavement. Those are those detection, they detect magnetic detection. But the newer lights have cameras on, or usually have photo sensors on. They're still there, but that light does act up from time to time. We get calls, haven't had one for a while, but we get calls with the turnarounds a lot on that light. And usually what the guys will have to do, our crew goes up and just resets the light, and it usually takes care of it for a while.
I will tell you this, in my conversations with our, with our dear friends over at the DOH, they have overridden some of that stuff, because they're trying to help traffic flow out of Main Street better for the peak times, but it's not going very well. At night, it's like, it's still following the same cadence as it does at 5 o'clock, trying to push traffic through, so, but they've overridden some of that stuff.
It needs to be upgraded signal at some point. It's, it's an adaptive system.
They love so much the.
I will tell you, though, just from, from an experience yesterday I had, and I think anyone that's been at WVU comes out of the hospital there during a peak time, especially with students in class, can tell you that those, those lights over there are really, really a pain whenever you're trying to get out of that hospital, because they will back up traffic, people are trying to beat them, and they're not time sequentially. So you have everything past the third light up to where you, where you make the corner there at the Coliseum. There's hardly any vehicles, but in those, that three blocks down, where those three locks of the blocks are that are light controlled, it is completely backed up, and like I said, it was, it was extremely difficult to get out of there. So I think our Main Street, and go back to that four-way stop thing, I think the Main Street now, and as the mayor said, if the state could get that light to sequence or the upgrade that light to something with, with better sensors on it, I think traffic would move much smoother through Main Street without the, without those lights on Main Street. I think it does, but anyhow, might be sense.
One comment on the refuge island.
Yes, sir.
Employees, physicians office center over there, and up at the hospital, they allow it because it has slowed traffic down.
Yeah.
So it is, it does have its positives.
Yeah. Okay, you want to go ahead and let's talk about F3 while you're here.
Yes, sir.
Council will recall, we had an executive session relative to property matters last time to discuss the potential of, of kind of putting on the brakes on the expansion of the, of the Riverwalk Trail in the southward direction, because it, at Marion Street, the plan would be that we'd exit the river area and become a neighborhood path, an eight-foot wide neighborhood path on, using wood, Preston, Monongalia, Randolph streets over through there, and then potentially focusing our efforts on something on the North Locust Street area. We, of course, were in executive session, we could only talk about that, we could not take an actionable vote, so we're bringing it here to the council agenda to, for a possible vote, to pump the brakes on expanding it south of Marion Street until maybe something could change with, with the railroad, or that there is an effort made from on the county side to actually take it past Moore Avenue, because as it stands, it would just dead end at Moore Avenue after going through some folks' yard, and there could be an opportunity to improve things over on the north end of town with that same DOH partnership. Would you, as council, be prepared to formally take a vote to pump the brakes on the, on the, on the southward portion of the River Trail at Marion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, there is a motion by Mr. Sanders, there is a second. Is there any further discussion?
Who has a second, bud?
Jack.
I would only add that Jay Holland was optimistic that our funding mechanism would continue into the future, that they would hopefully reconsider when we are ready to do something, that we'd be eligible for renewing that financing, so let's hope so.
Anything else? I would ask for that question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. All right. I think that's it.
That's it.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You, Ambi, my friend, talk about, you want, she'll talk about that, or I'm sure.
What's that now?
I was, he asked which one would want to talk in depth at all about the facade. I figured it would be you more than.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Won't be in depth, it'll be.
All right, well, we are now to you for our finance report, and while you're up, let's go ahead and talk about a few items too. You have, you've laid in front of us a financial statement, so we'll let you have your report, and if you want to jump into that, we can.
Okay. So for the report, my normal report, I'll give you balances for the enterprise funds ending August 31st. Waste collection, 1,349,000, and their money market in checking. And then they have a CD savings of 258,000, and we have a letter of credit that we keep for the old landfill for 64,000. Water board money market in checking, 975,000, and then their working capital and savings accounts are 874,000. Sanitary board money market checking, 990,000, and then their working capital and savings is at 459,000. And then the stormwater funds at 243,000. I wanted to update you, we have been working on alcohol license for the event center and the theater, and we've got that pretty much ironed out now. It's a third-party vendor in town that's helping us with that, and will be, for now, third-party.
For now, yeah, we're still looking at potential license for the event center, yeah.
Jerry told you about the Saturday, this Saturday is the last day residential customers can take their garbage for free. They have to be the regular customers that our truck picks up every month and you pay a monthly bill. Please remember to bring that bill with you. It'll save a lot of time, that bill with you and your ID, so that we can check off that you have dumped the garbage, and then we actually count how many loads you bring in.
And once again, that is not, you don't just have to live in the city limits. If you are a city of Buchanan Waste Customer, so even if you live in Adrian and Buchanan picks up your waste, you are eligible for this. If you have a bill to the city of Buchanan for waste collection, you can take advantage of this.
Yep. And then, of course, you mentioned the free day. In your bills to be approved, ones I'll point out to you, $4,750, Greg Green of the Maze, that's feasibility, financial feasibility study for the Stockard East Center project. $2,180, Foo Bar Enterprises CB radio for the fire chief's new truck. You see his other truck setting out there, waiting to be turned in, and then when they sell that, we'll get that weight out of that truck. 1,760 A&amp;A for yellow curb paint, 4,995 Ben Arisman for Mowing City Lots, 7,700 Trade Works Labor at the Colonial. They're still, we're working on that side, though, I think it's finished.
It is.
Okay, yeah, finished. 1,811 life tight metal for trim on the rooftop of the theater. So those are the ones we're pointing out to you.
You mentioned yellow curb paint?
Sure.
It's not, we need to start thinking about putting a masonry conditioner on the concrete, because it's not bond bonding, you know? I mean, I've used, one of my properties, I'd stuck out it and used the clear penetrating masonry conditioner, just used latex paint. Twenty-five years later, it's still sticking. The yellow paint in the bill that we're painting the curves, but it's fallen off, you know, partially because they don't let you use the right paint, proximate to the stormwater, but.
That worked out real well. When I spilt the whole thing in the back of my truck, I was able to wash it out.
Well, I don't think we want to be, for that reason.
Do you want me to go on to the financial statement, or do you want me to come back to that?
No, let's go ahead and do it while you're here.
Okay, so the financial statement's in your packet, and of course, this is an exercise we have to do every year. By September 30th, according to West Virginia state law, we have to publish the financial statement for the general fund and coltax, and it should be in your packet. It also lists the vendors list for the year, beginning July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2023. In the packet, you'll see the assets and liabilities, you'll see your revenues and expenditures for the month. This is without any journal entries that the auditor will give us in the future, or if the CPA goes back and sees something needs to be in. So financial statement is, we ended on June 30th. Revenues, 6,991,000. Expenditures, 7,424,000. So the change in the fund balance was at 433,000. We had several capital projects that we worked on. We had 756,000 in capital projects. We also had about $300,000 that was due to us from the generator grant, and we got that in the mid-fiscal year, so that wasn't reflected in that financial statement. So that's the quick explanation of it, and then you'll see the vendors list in the back with, that will be published in the newspaper. And I would need, count, to get it certified, the mayor, the recorder has to sign the certification, and at least two council members. So that's the financial statement.
I'll move to approve.
If you have any questions later, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks, Amber.
Thank you.
So there is a motion by Mr. Sanders and a second by Mr. Rigor. Is there any discussion before I ask for the question? Hearing the need for none, we'll call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries unanimously, and Randy and I will sign it. While Ambi's up there, I want to draw your attention to F6. You'll recall, we went through an exercise with our, with our, with a third-party appraiser that then would affect our insurance carrier, specific to our more unique buildings and properties here in the city, meaning like Stockard East Center is a little bit unique, the Public Safety Complex is a little bit unique, the water department, water plant's very unique, the tanks, the sewer department, and we went through, because your replacement cost estimators only gets you so far, and unique buildings need to be specifically looked at by a professional appraiser that can tell you what those buildings are indeed worth. So we received that, that report back. Some of them, some of the values we have right on the money, some of them needed to go up a little bit, some of them need to go down a little bit. So what we did is, we went to our insurance carrier to plug in those, those numbers for our replacement cost estimator, but what we found in the exercise is, is that the deductible on our policy is entirely too low. We were, we had some 500 and $1,000 deductibles. Those are, those are what you would find on your, on your personal homeowners or renters, or even maybe some commercial policies. What we asked Jamie to do was to, what if we were to have a $10,000 deductible on our property side? Again, this has nothing to do with liability. Liability doesn't, isn't, doesn't have that kind of deductible. So we would be, we would basically be insuring our properties for a catastrophe. We are signaling to the insurance company two things. One, that, that we would only be calling them for a catastrophe and that we're not going to nickel and dime them, and two, we are signaling our financial stability as an organization. So you have two quotes in the back of your packet before you on property insurance alone from Westfield Insurance that Jamie provided. One quote is plugging in everything, and that would represent $55,000 in, in property premium. The second quote would be $10,000 less with a $10,000 deductible instead of $1,000, and that would be $44,000 in, in premium. I will tell you this, we took this to the water board first, because we talked about the water plant. The water board agreed that we should take up the $10,000 deductible. Then it became, we recognized that this is a policy-wide deductible, so the water board took action to, to have the water plant sit at a $10,000 deductible. The sewer department this morning, the board took that to a $10,000 deductible, but because we have general fund interests in other buildings in town, we would need to ask for the council to agree to a $10,000 deductible for our, for our structures.
Phil move. That's quote two.
That is quote two.
Yes. I would second Mr. Thomas's motion that we go with quote two.
Man, you guys are real, I explained all that this morning, and you know Phil Loftus. Phil Loftus will have some questions. He said, "So moved." I said, "Well, he must have done a good job." So, all right, we do it again this evening. So we have a motion by Mr. Thomas, we have a second by Mr. McCauley. Is there any further discussion? And that is to take quote two, the $10,000 deductible. Hearing the need for none, we'll call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries unanimously. I should have asked if you had anything you wanted to.
No.
When it comes to insurance, I just kind of, just kind of go.
Yeah, the appraisers came in, actually brought the premiums down anyway.
Right.
With the deductible, that was when, getting back our deductible.
Did you want to give my voice a break and talk about F7?
Yes. So some of you might recall, we had a facade grant last fiscal year, and foster marketing was in, they had got approved for a facade grant for 2,500, maximum of $2,500. At the end, we didn't build anything into the budget for this year for facade grant, didn't complete the project, and actually, I thought maybe he wasn't doing it, because I hadn't heard anything. When he was approved for the facade grant, those are actually only good for six months. So then he came back and asked about applying for payment on the facade grant, which is only with receipts that, of actual expenditure. So I explained to him, we hadn't built it into the budget, he was beyond his six-month limit, and then I, there is a, there's a, in the facade grant, if you want to ask for an extension from council, that's permissible, and it was given, that option is given in the grant. So I said, maybe that would be your best option, to ask council if they are willing to extend this into this year for this particular.
So that six months would start after, if we would pass that tonight, it would start now?
Now.
Travis Foster. Ted North Spring Street, he owns a commercial building.
I move that we grant the extension.
Second.
All right. Motion to grant the extension for six months for Ted North Spring Street by McCauley, second by Thomas. Is there any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, we'll call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes, sign opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Ambi. All right. Police Chief Matthew Gregory. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Hi, Matt.
Hello. A few things this evening. The police department is, once again, hoping. A few things this evening. The police department is once again hosting Megan McMackin, who is a senior criminal justice student at Westman College. Megan has been with us as part of the service scholar program with Westman College since she was a freshman. And for many years, the police department has partnered with Westman's Office of Community Engagement, who places service scholars throughout the community. So we've had a number of students over the years having been involved in this program for about a decade and a half. Typically, we see students come to us in their freshman year and stay with us all throughout their college career. And we've seen Megan will be the third student that we've seen go all the way through college. Our proposal this year, we've actually taken on a second service scholar. In the past, we've only had one at a time, but this year, we have a second, who is a freshman, computer science major, local young man by the name of Dalton Aldo. The reason we have two this year is we recently made a proposal to the Office of Community Engagement to establish a mentorship program within the service scholar placement. Typically, service scholars who are placed with community organizations like the police department and many other community organizations as well, go through a learning process where they're molded and they learn leadership skills. My suggestion to the Office of Community Engagement was to, once our student reaches their senior year, to really lean heavily into the leadership component of the program, bring a freshman on board that they could mentor. So whereas Mr. Aldo is serving in the same capacity that Megan has since she was a freshman, helping us with a large variety of administrative tasks. Many of our service scholars in the past have assisted with such things as proofing for our clear accreditation. They've helped us write manuals that we utilize for the clear accreditation. So a lot of very important tasks have been accomplished in this program, and we will continue that with Dalton. However, he will be mentored by Megan. So Megan is really taking a leadership role in this process and reviews a lot of Dalton's work and prepares work for him at my direction. And so moving forward, we hope, we envision this being a great success for the service scholar program. Each time our freshman settles through the program and becomes a senior, Dalton can expect to have a freshman that will be assigned to him in three years. And that will be the cyclical component that I would suggest that we partner with the Office of Community Engagement moving forward. In addition to our service scholars, we also have interns, as we do every semester with the police department. This year, we have a young man by the name of Connor Gotham, who is a senior criminal justice major, serving his internship with the Buchanan Police Department. Megan, who had previously mentioned as our service scholar, is doing double duties. In addition to our service scholar hours, she is also serving internship hours with the Buchanan Police Department. As I mentioned earlier, she is a senior that will graduate in May with a criminal justice degree, with hopes of joining the Pennsylvania State Police, which is her home state. She's well into the process with that, we're helping with that. Thanks to recent information that was shared by Mr. Rylands, it was discovered that a gentleman by the name of Chesley Burns, who was the Buchanan Police Chief in 1921, was killed in the line of duty. As many of you know, you come to the police department, we give tours, when we have our Blue Wall Day, which began in 2017 in a remembrance of an officer, Buchanan police officer who was killed in the line of duty, that being Officer Wilbur Grubb. For all those years, we told everybody that he was the only police officer in Buchanan to ever be killed in the line of duty. We could no longer say that. As we've discovered this information, Chief Burns was shot during a prisoner transport from Clarksburg back to Buchanan, having arrested a couple of individuals who had stolen an automobile from a gentleman from East Main Street, and as a result of his wounds, died four days later. And Chief Burns had only been chief of police for six weeks. Reviewing our minutes, July 1st, 1921, he was named chief, and had only actually been a member of the police department for just a few weeks before that. He was a young man, he was only 36 years of age, and left behind a wife and three children. And absolutely just threw me for a loop when I found this information out. Again, because not only had we always reported, and really throughout my whole career, I've been here for 27 years now, I've always been familiar with the story of Officer Grubb. I can remember one of the first things that I saw when I started with the department and Chief Gooday's office were the print, the printouts of the newspaper articles talking about Officer Grubb's murder. And so again, for all that time, that was our understanding that he was the only officer killed in the line of duty. So really, you know, you hear about history being rewritten and coming into new information like that, and how it can completely just unveil a whole new world to you. That's really been our experience over the last few weeks as we've learned more and more about this situation. And really, the realization that, how much of a shame it is that really this terrible event has been lost to history. There was no, other than the newspaper articles we saw, there was no local information that's, you know, and you often hear stories that are passed down from generation to generation. That's how I found out about Officer Grubb. I had never heard mention of Chief Burns with the incident that happened in 1921. Even our own records, as I reviewed to confirm whether or not, when I first saw this article, whether or not he was employed here. That's where I found out that he was chief of police, and six weeks later, after he passed, I found mention where there was another individual who was named chief of police, but no reason why. There was no reason given as to why that new chief was named only six weeks later. And so that is something that we hope to remedy. We are heavily involved in researching this incident. The Westman students that I just mentioned are very involved in researching this, this incident. We have uncovered a large volume of information, not only through ancestry.com, thanks to Ambi at help with that, but thanks to the ladies at the Gibson Library. I introduced our students to the fine world of microfilm and microfiche. They had absolutely no idea what that was, and they got to learn how to use that machine and roll the film through, and we found an absolute wealth of information in local newspaper records from everything, recounting everything from the event itself, all the way up through the trial. So it's our intention to, as we research this, to create a memorial for Chief Burns in the police department that is very similar to Officer Grubb's memorial, and make this a formal occasion as we progress into next spring for our Blue Wall Memorial, and have much more information about that. Beyond that, we want to communicate this research to the National Law Enforcement Board, that we have paperwork for right now, and I feel that we are getting enough research that I could communicate that, because there's absolutely no record anywhere of his passing, and we hope to, again, not only remedy that locally, but remedy that on a national scale for those types of agencies that recognize.
You know, there are burdens is here.
Yeah.
I mean, we have, that name is still around here.
We have, yeah, we have found his descendants, and it's our intention, Ambi actually had a conversation, I think, with a granddaughter, and so it's our intention to further reach out to the family and involve them in this process. And I'm sure that, not only honor his sacrifice, but to also share the research with the family, which I'm sure many of them don't have as well.
Yeah, that's great.
The mayor was with him when he was shot.
Yeah, the mayor was in the vehicle, and in fact, the mayor was the only one not shot in the vehicle. There was a constable who was, who was shot and was back and forth, or whatever the hell he was going on, survived.
He survived.
He survived, yeah.
Matt, I don't mean to interrupt your report at all, but, I mean, I'm thinking back over my 41 years here. I remember having conversations about Web Grubb with J.D. Hinkle Jr., Mickey Poundstone, Ed Bennett, everybody, Bob Wallace, everybody and their brother knew about Web Grubb.
Yeah.
But I, I feel really stupid that I've never heard this story until I read the packet for tonight's meeting.
Yes. Again, no official, other than the local newspaper, and again, it was false to microfilm and microfiche. We had to, we went through volumes and volumes of newspaper articles that we were able to find while we were.
But they did find.
We did, yeah.
Yeah.
The only other thing, just shifting gears from that, to mention, I know Chief Kimball had individuals from Battalion One Consultants at the last meeting, and presented a program to council relative to a regional mental health and wellness program for first responders. And I know as a result of that initial presentation, there have been additional meetings that we've had, not only with the fire department, but with Battalion One Consultants, as well as our regional fire and police partners as well with this program. And just wanted to add to council that, through this process, through our discussions with Chief Kimball, that myself, on behalf of the Buchanan Police Department, we fully support and advocate for this type of program for our agencies. Mayor, that's all I have. Was your question?
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
You know, Chesley Burns is a lot easier to say in a proclamation than Wilbur H. Web Grubb.
Yeah.
That's a big mouthful right there.
Chris, he's, I know with the Web Grubb memorial, we found his gravesite in Morris. Chesley Burns is buried in Heffersum here.
I'll be there.
Interesting.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Mr. O'Neil.
Thanks.
Any interesting stories from you?
Oh, nothing like that, thankfully. I'll be brief. I just wanted to update the council on a couple matters that we've been working on. The Westland property transfer, we've been, it's been difficult to get a response from West Virginia Westland to request for information that we've lodged with them. They have a meeting, I spoke with, I communicated with their attorney this week. They have a meeting tomorrow, and he apologized for the delay in their response to our inquiries, but they expect that they'll be responsive within the next day or two on that. I think we'll be prepared to move forward with the survey of the rail trail property in particular within the next week or so. I don't know how long that will take, but that process is moving on, and I think it will just be a matter of a couple handful of weeks before we've closed that matter and that is done. I have a meeting tomorrow with Alan Turner, who is representing United Coal Company, to kind of advance our discussions. I have most of the information I need internally in order to do that. And finally, just to make you aware, the State Supreme Court heard a case in the matter of the Morgantown firefighters and their holiday pay lawsuit. Once the decision in that case is handed down by the court, which could be a matter of several weeks to several months, we may or may not have to revisit our holiday pay policies, which starts with the fire department. But given that our current policies are the result of a prior lawsuit and were set out in a court order, my counsel to the council is that we're not in a position to make any changes until the State Supreme Court changes the law, or hands down, or at least hands down, a decision in the matters that they're considering. That's fine.
Will it be retroactive?
In our case, I don't think so because we are, we're following a court order for our practices. And frankly, I, well, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I'm happy to take any questions.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, let's roll through this very quickly. I think we can do that. Under responsive information, as Jerry mentioned, we have our final Make It Shine Day on Saturday. We'll get something else on social media tomorrow. That's from 7:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. at the transfer station. Up Shore County Hallways Authority also, as mentioned by Jerry, a free residential shred event will be also on the 23rd, that is Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and that's at, that's at our street department just across the road from the transfer station. Last meeting, we set trick or treat inside the city limits. That is on October 31st, Halloween, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30, and the Buchanan Community Halloween events as well. The county, you'll notice, I think you saw that they mirrored us, trick or treat in Up Shore County outside of city limits is the same as in the city. We have FOIA requests from Smart Procure for vendor information, and then a FOIA request from Alexander Barker, building permits on 20 Rayale Lane and 1 Armored Road and 66 West Main Street, and then we have the report of the cat and dog activity from the Up Shore County Commission for August 2023. Under the consent agenda, we have the approval of amendments from 9:00 to 7:00. We do not have the others. Randy's still catching up. Approval of the building and wiring permits, and the approval of the payment of bills. Is there a motion to carry, to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I have to excuse myself for me, too.
Okay.
Still moved. You're, wait a minute. Okay, Rylands is moving.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Do you have building permit or something?
Caution.
Okay.
Okay. McCauley, second.
Okay, so Rylands and McCauley with the, note the abstention of Mr. Rigor due to a conflict of interest. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes signed opposed. Motion carries with that one exception. All right, under strategic issues for discussion or vote, we have taken care of one through three and six and seven. These are very quick. Last meeting, we're playing a little bit of chess here. Mr. Rigor so thankfully agreed to be a part of the Senior Citizens Center Board as the council representative, and that he was on the historic landmarks. He and, he agreed with Pamela Buckle that she would like to serve on the historic landmarks as the council representative. Is there a motion to appoint Pam Buckle to Historic Landmarks? Motion by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Rylands. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Likes signed opposed, motion carries. F5, we have to appoint someone to the Up Shore County Recreation Board. This is not the city's Parks and Rec Board, this is the Up Shore County Board. And Amberly Stump reached in and asked if she could be appointed. She has a lot of interest in it, and typically, when someone wants to do it, we say, "By absolutely, we would love to have you." So would you please approve Amberly Stump to the Up Shore County Parks and Rec Board?
Second.
Motion by Sanders, second by Rylands. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes signed opposed, motion carries. We do not have Council Lady Buckle with us any longer, so we will go down to Mr. McCauley.
We still have technically a Stocker Capital Campaign, and anybody that wants to contribute to that capital campaign, there've been a couple of recent gifts that have trickled in, please come down to City Hall, and Teresa will take your money.
Absolutely.
That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rigor.
Don't have anything.
Mr. Thomas.
Everybody have a great weekend. That's it.
I thought you were wearing.
Thought it was going NASA's 14 charge.
CJ.
I'm good.
Mr. Sanders.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, well, I'm good as well. Thanks, everybody, for what they do.
Well, that's amazing. Everybody's good.
I think we're tired. Okay, at 8:50, I would entertain a motion that we.